So while it will be, it will, there will be a routine travel of presidents going to and from work to see that they will see these buildings, is that a moderate to large impact from an environmental standpoint?
No.
I see most people on the board saying no. And I know Hugh might have a different opinion.
Not necessarily, but I felt that that was enough to be worth talking about. There is going to be a totally different view than what the houses that are visible from the same road is, simply because of the construction and the height.
Right. And one of the ways to mitigate that concern would be to have a landscaping plan that would screen those buildings. My expectation is that that would be something that is planned for this going to.
You're going to require that.
We would think of conditioning that our approval based on that if we get that far.
Got it.
And I would think that if this were the only development in a large open area, the impact would be more significant than the development of this piece of property in light of what's developed around it. So with that in mind, I think without a doubt it's a.
And that goes to the very next question. These are, there are similar projects visible within the following distance of the proposed project, zero to half a mile, yes? And a half a mile to a third, to three miles, there are apartment complexes of three stories within at least three miles, if not half a mile.
A lot closer.
Or other apartment complexes across the street, which is a half a mile. So in the context, as you said, in the context of development around that area and in Radisson, is it a significant environmental impact?
No.
Okay.
What did we say about E?
E was a notice small impact.
What did, in E, it said, "The proposed action may cause a diminishment in the public enjoyment and appreciation of the designated aesthetic resource." What is a designated?
I think that goes to the whole issue. What are they talking about here? What are they getting at? Some kind of designated aesthetic resource, and they reference it in the first question where it says, "Impact on aesthetic resources." They talk about current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource. Are there scenic or aesthetic resources in this area?
Forested land.
Well, that's everything. I think it would be like a scenic overview on a side of a road somewhere.
I think a designated would be the Melton Farms Conservation Esmond Sub Act that we did for that huge shed would be an example of what this question is getting at.
So I think, I think that is kind of a clue as to where, what they're talking about here is some kind of aesthetic resource that people actually come and observe. And as Steve said, in this area, it's a relatively developed residential area. Without any specific aesthetic resource that anybody has designated isn't important to view from a fancy point.
And those who view it, it's a casual observation and driving by. It's not as if someone travels there in order to enjoy the aesthetic view.
All very good input. Thank you. I did note under G, other impacts, that the engineer for the applicant has provided us with a letter addressing this issue dated January 10th, 2022. I incorporated that letter and that response into their, into this review. Okay. Number 10, impact on historic and architectural, archeological, I'm sorry, resources. The proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archeological resource. We're not aware of any? No. Do you have a letter from the State Historic Preservation Office? I need to go for it. I'm sorry, did a full blown page. And it indicated that there was no, you know. Okay, so the answer to that is no. Impact on open space and recreation, proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or reduction of an open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan. The answer to that is no. I don't disagree with that. Impact on critical environmental area, we don't have a critical environmental area in the town designated, so yeah, that is no. Impact on transportation, proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems. Clearly, this will result in increased traffic. So I assume the answer to that would be yes. And we'll go through the sub-questions on this. Yes.
I would agree.
I'm not sure I even agree. I mean, in the sense that it says it will result in a change to a transportation system. We're not widening the road, we're not changing the shoulder, and we're not changing the light pattern. So what's the change to, I mean, we're increasing traffic, but how is there a change to the transportation system?
Well, it will create.
More vehicles.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with that.
Not only more vehicles, but two more potential impact points between the two entrances from Oakbrook, which does make a little difference in people trying to look left, look to the right, look to the right, look to the left, or vice versa when you're coming in rather than going out.
I agree with all that, but.
I think that is a change. I think, I don't necessarily say it rises to the level, but I do think that is a change.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind going through the rest of the questions, but I guess we've talked about it and we have not asked, and I don't think the studies have indicated that there needs to be a change to the transportation system. We are adding traffic, and I think without a doubt, the addition of that traffic should be taken into consideration when reviewing the project. But I, but I don't know, again, the intent of the question, we're not changing the system. But I'm okay with going through the rest of the questions for clarity.
Certainly, yes.
So let's do that. A, projected traffic increase may exceed capacity of existing road network. We do have a traffic impact study that has indicated that the levels of traffic that exists on site, if they are degraded, would be degraded in a minor way. So that traffic study is before us, and that is the indication from that. So the answer to that would be no.
Notice small.
The proposed action may result in the construction of a paid parking area of 500 or more vehicles.
No.
Proposed action will degrade the existing transit access?
No.
No.
This is a collector road that we're talking about, and it's a collector road that is almost two miles long before there's a stop sign, and there are no driveways that entire length of that road. I'm talking about Drake's Landing.
There's roads.
Will it degrade the existing transit access? There's no, we have, we've got a traffic study that says just the opposite, that it won't degrade access, or it won't, it won't.
Have significant impact.
It won't obstruct the flow of traffic in and around that area.
I had the feeling that the way that was written, though, they were more concerned with the intersection of Drake's and Route 31 as opposed to what happens actually on Drake's Landing, but maybe that's just me.
Look at both the Oakbrook South and Oakbrook North entrances on Drake's Landing in the traffic study, so those were considered.
And I think the, the point that Hugh makes that there are no driveways on the road, we kind of talked about this last meeting, is that, and I think that's a good point to be made because you enter a driveway significantly different than you enter a road, and there are roads off of Drake's Landing. And I think that was our discussion, is that these drivelanes should be designed in the manner of a road, allowing someone to exit Drake Landing without having to come to such a slow speed that may result in concern for traffic, and able to enter with good visibility to make sure that they're clear. And sometimes that doesn't exist in a driveway, and I think the applicant had talked, we talked to them about it, and I think that's their intent.
And I believe that it's designed to road specs. I mean, we talked, that's part of what we talked about. So it is more of a road than a driveway.
That's certainly to be part of the site plan review, and so you would mitigate Hugh's concerns of making the access driveways really built to road specs.
Yeah, I think the concern is a good concern to bring, and I think then there's certainly a way to avoid the problems that may result if they were indeed driveways. So I think it's good to bring that up.
All right. So notice small with Hugh's concerns kept in mind to be mitigated by road standards for access driveways. The proposed action will degrade existing pedestrian bicycling, bicycle accommodations? The answer to that is no.
No.
There are none.
At that location.
Proposed action may alter the present pattern of movement of people or goods.
No.
No. And then I did note that under F, that a traffic study shows little to no degradation of service on existing roads, and also the response from Gunn and Stromo on 11222.
I don't know if it's appropriate here, but there were some remaining questions that the fire department brought. I don't know if we want to talk about it here or elsewhere, but.
That would be.
Not under this part.
This section.
Yeah, we talked about that in the site plan.
Do that in the site plan.
Yeah, I have no problem waiting for site plan either.
Just remember it, and we will, for sure. Number 14, impact on energy, proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy.
That is the most ridiculous.
Answer, no. Impact on noise, odor, and light, proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odor, or outdoor lighting. Answer, that is, like any other residential building that's going to be constructed, there will be some.
Lighting.
Noise, odor, and lights. The light issue is mitigated by.
Dark sky.
Dark night lighting will be required from this board. The proposed, so again, is the answer that no?
Yeah.
No, or small.
No, or small.
Right, small.
16, proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposures to new or existing source contaminations or contaminants?
No.
Think that's a concern? Answer, no.
No.
Consistency with community plans, proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plan. What's everybody's thought on that?
Well, it's certainly consistent with the Radisson PUD.
The land. Is owned for?
It's owned for residential, multifamily residential. Right in the plan, it's approved by the RCA on that basis.
So the answer to that is no?
No.
Yes.
I would say no.
And I think the engineer, our engineer has raised that question with the applicant, and may have provided a response to that question in their January 1st, January 12th, 2020.
10.
10.
And no variance was applied for this parcel, right? I mean, it's, the code is for this use.
Correct.
Right.
And then the final question is consistency with community character, the proposed action is inconsistent with the existing community character. What's everybody's thoughts on that?
What, what do you describe, when you say community character, what community are you referring to? The specific location or Radisson as a community?
I think it's up to you to make that determination, but I think Radisson certainly is the community in which this project would be built.
Therefore, it would be quite consistent with Radisson's character.
Unless, unless you just look at the area immediately around it, which are single-family homes that are nowhere near as dense as this project would be. I don't know if you can even do that.
There's apartments across the street as well, just as close.
Yeah, there's no question apartments are allowed. No question, no.
No, I'm just saying you can't take, I mean, River Knoll are within a stone's throw as well, and those are apartments.
But they're not as dense. They're only two stories high, and each one of them has a substantial grass area around it.
Okay.
Well, you're looking at layout, but I, I can go, I think, within a half a mile of that and see exactly the same thing. Three-story apartments backed up to residential housing.
That's on Willa Parkway?
Willa Parkway. I mean, it's not inconsistent with how Radisson has allowed development in its community.
I think that's a good point.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so the answer to that is no. Okay, so that completes our review of part two. Board, it's up to you how you want to speak from here. In the past, what we have done is you've asked me to draft a resolution for the next board meeting that would be consistent with the findings that were made tonight. If that's what you wanted to do, we'll be happy to.
That was exactly what I was going to ask you to do. So attorney will draft a secret resolution for our consideration at our March meeting based on the discussion and comments tonight.
And if anybody has any additional comments they want to provide, please feel free to.
And the resolution will be for a negative declaration.
Correct.
As, as we discussed. Having completed the seeker review, we can now move to the public hearing with regard to this matter. I would ask, does a developer wish to say anything or just wish to listen to the comments of whoever may talk and respond?
Whatever, whatever board would like, if you have any clarification for the explanation or anything, that would be able to provide at this point or after?
Well, we have, as we said, when we get to the site review part of this project, a lot of the questions and stuff you'd be presenting would go there.
That's what I think.
So if I may, what I'd like to propose is we will open the public hearing. I would ask people to try to keep their comments to three, no more than five minutes, and anyone who does wish to speak on this matter, come to the microphone, state your name and address, and give us your thoughts. Anyone wish to talk?
Jack, one question I would ask is, what is the public basing their comments on? What has been provided on the, through the website, correct?
I think on that site plan.
Okay.
That's been submitted.
All right.
Maybe we should put this up on the board?
My question is, are there any changes from what the public has, has had access to?
We're going to, we're going to propose some minor, I think minor changes, which we have, we were saying last, last time, but are now less reflected on the site plan, just because we figured it would be more coming up, and we're going to change it every week. Minor, you know, minor, relative to the site, just making all changes.
Let's see. Okay. So I think it's worth that the public, and we can say that the public is, has what they've seen is what right now is proposed to be constructed there.
Yes. I'll put the areas up here too, in case I please.
If anybody needs to get closer, feel free to walk up and look at it.
Okay, is there anyone who wishes to speak about this project? Please.
My name's John Marzaki, 3272 Oakbrook Road. I live directly across the street from this proposed development. Our neighborhood is entirely single-family dwellers. Our neighborhood will be directly impacted by this proposed development. The main consideration I would ask this board to take into account on any site plan would be the traffic on Drake's Landing. Currently, I take a left onto Drake's Landing from Oakbrook Road to the intersection of Route 31, and then turn a left on Route 31, heading east on a daily commute to work. The light at the intersection of Drake's Landing and Route 31 does not have a dedicated left turn, and it's only one lane. The board should consider having the developer widely Drake's Landing and add a dedicated left turn lane to allow for the additional traffic to move smoothly through the intersection during peak traffic hours. The developer has proposed in their environmental impact statement that there will be 345 parking spaces at the site. So I would assume the developer believes that there'll be approximately 345 vehicles in those sites. I don't know if that counts the garages on the property. If it does not include the garages, there's 12 or 14 garages, I don't know how many cars in each garage, but you're looking at probably somewhere between 345 and 400 vehicles that could be parked on that site at any time. I suggest the board address this matter now as opposed to the future, because what's going to happen, obviously, is the residents in Radisson that use that road and the new residents at the apartment are all going to complain to the town about the traffic in the morning and the traffic in the afternoon. And this board can make reasonable restrictions and limitations on the developer to make the project work for the neighborhood where it's located. The next consideration the board should take into account is the density of the proposed apartment complex. Since the surrounding property is primarily, if not exclusively, single-family homes, the board should approve the lowest density possible regarding this development. This will assist in keeping in line with the character of the surrounding neighborhood. The board should also have the developer maintain a substantial buffer of trees and/or earthen berms along Drake's Landing portion of the development. The site is currently all trees and shrub, which should be maintained as much as possible along the boundaries and possibly even supplemented by the developer. Further, the board should consider if the project can be moved more to the west to expand the proposed buffer on Drake's Landing. Finally, I would ask the board to confirm that any lighting on the project not be directed towards neighboring properties across the street. I'd like to thank the board for taking these points into, in the site plan approval process, which will hopefully lead to success for the project and lessen the concerns of the single-family property owners in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we ask questions of the, can we ask questions of the speakers?
Of the speakers?
Yeah.
If you'd like to.
Sir, if you don't mind, I'd just ask you a question. You, you travel there at the peak time in the morning, do you? How many, how many light cycles does it take you to take a left right now? Is it sometimes more than one, or do you usually get through in one?
Sometimes more than one, if you can turn left.
Okay, so a left is tough there in the morning. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So I'm a neighbor, I'm Paul Warily, I live on Oakbrook Road 3294. So I want to comment first on the seeker piece. I have concerns about water. I think everybody on this street's sun pumps are nonstop. There's a lot of water held on that site. I looked at the submission that was given to the Army Corps of Engineers, and they said that we're not interested in the area labeled as Section A, but they were interested in the area called Section B. The developer proposed probably half of that site. Half of that development is on B, where the Army Corps is, is interested. So that needs to be mitigated. Also, I don't think they're keeping to the buffer zone, you know, there's no buffer there, they're within 10 feet of the regulated lightway. So some of these things that were passed by in the seeker review should be looked at again. There's listed endangered plants and animals, it lists on the DC's website. We sort of passed over that, we need to dig into that a little deeper. Oakbrook is going to take a load, you're going to take a heavy load of water. It's a regulated stream, and it goes, it pours within 200 yards into a regulated river. But it's going to take a lot of that. There's going to be a lot of salt from that site, it's not C and L, calcium chloride, other things that are going to be running off directly into that regulated lightway. So it needs to be looked at. My neighbor talked about the lighting issue. We talked about the traffic. You can't make a left, can't turn on Drake's Landing, you can go to work at eight o'clock. You will weigh a couple light intervals. You're backing up a back step away. So you have to go right and go all the way around, do something for U-turn. It's a problem. You could add 162 apartments, you've got 300 cars, they're going to hit that at the same time. It's going to be a problem. So you do need passing, you do need to turn left there. So it needs to be looked at, and I would call it a significant impact. Aesthetically, we talked about whether or not this was going to be impacting the neighborhood, and of course it is. It's three stories tall, so we talked about landscaping, but unless you're planting trees that are 30-foot tall, it's going to be a problem. You're going to see this, and it is aesthetic. There's, our walking trail is right across the street from this. So it is something that people walk along there, you're walking around, you've got Drake's Landing, but you've got trees all around you. There's a buffer to all the houses. So you need to look at that, it's not, you can't pass over that, it's not a significant aesthetic resource that's going to be damaged. Right now, those houses and that trail, I don't see it from my house, but I walked that trail, it's going to look a lot different. So there's, there's a significant impact. Those are, those are my primary issues.
Thank you.
So I don't, I don't think this is a candidate for a negative declaration. It needs to be looked at. You need, you need a complete environmental impact study, in my view.
Okay, thank you.
Can you?
Tim?
You said that there are, like, major plans on this site that are.
It's on the DC's website.
Are you aware of any of those, Greg?
The citizens, we need to look at it, right?
Yeah, we do.
We do. If they were looked at, they weren't found, so thank you for your information.
And sir, did you also say that it's, did you say it's difficult to turn left onto Drake's Landing?
No, he meant 31.
No, you can't turn left, assuming that you're the.
Off of Drake's Landing, onto.
You're going to go through a couple lights. Somebody's nice enough to stop and let you in, it'll happen. But when you start having that additional load of, you know, more than 100 cars, let's just say it's 100 cars in the morning, it's going to be a problem, it's going to be hard to get out and go to work.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to clarify if you meant out of Drake's, out of Oakbrook onto Drake's or out of Drake's onto 31? You meant out of Drake's onto 31.
I meant out of Oakbrook onto Drake's.
Oh.
When you're going to work, you pull up on Oakbrook, you get to Drake's Landing, you can't get onto Drake's. There's only probably room for 10 cars there now, and at 8:00 in the morning, that's backed up to the other entrance of Oakbrook.
Yeah.
So it's, it's hard, it's a problem. You need to know the lane there at minimum. I don't know how that was measured during your traffic study, but it's, it's an issue.
It's an issue now, you're saying?
It's an issue now. If you add that additional load down there, those folks have to go that way, there's no other way to go. There are alternatives. This site, why can't this site load onto 31? I mean, that's, that sort of eliminates the Drake's Landing piece. It's also too big. You know, they're trying to put 10 pounds of goods in a five-pound bag. They're approaching on the west, it's just, it's just too big, it's too tall, it's too big.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Tim Bobo, and I live at 3308 Oakbrook Road, and I would simply like to endorse the comments and points made by the previous two speakers and add one additional comment, and that, that's in reference to the apartments and housing off Willa Parkway. And the difference there is that Willa Parkway is, is a two-lane road on each side, whereas Drake's Landing is certainly one lane, so that, I think that, that makes a real difference. And also, it's the two Oakbrook entrances, and then, unless, I don't know, 10 to 15 miles away is the first Partridge Dairy entrance, so it's more than just like the two Oakrarks that come to Drake's at that point.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
There's a camper on 3058 Samantha Drive. I had a question. When was the traffic study done? Was it done before COVID, after COVID? When was it done?
Before COVID.
It was done before COVID. That's important. Also, I, to reiterate what he was saying about why can't they go out, have an exit onto 31, having it onto Drake's. Already Drake's is overloaded. I mean, my husband, we live on Samantha, and he comes down deep lane, makes a right on Drake's, and he gets traffic. That's, it gets backed up in the morning. So it's not like it's just Oakbrook. It goes back further, and we have issues as well. And we talk about the apartments across the street and how all of those are fine. Well, they are, but they're smaller, like you said, and they have more greenery and everything than what this looks like it's going to have. And that is awfully big. The number of parking spots alone is just amazing to me. And to think that all the beautiful wildlife is going to be taken away, the foreign flora there is going to be taken away by this. And that's one of the reasons I even moved to Radisson, is because I want to be a nature. And now it looks like it's going to be taken away. And I do walk those trails, and it is going to make a difference in what you have around you. And like I say, the traffic alone is going to be a problem. And the apartments across the street, they are beautiful. There's no question about it. They look beautiful. But since they've been there, we've had an increase in crime and everything in the neighborhood. We've had people from the apartments coming in using the amenities of Radisson. It increases the load on Radisson as far as the number of people on the trails, you know, things could go on. And we have no way to prevent that. So, you know, and we pay these dues to keep this area beautiful, and we're going to have an increase of people using the amenities that we're paying for. You know, so those kinds of things I think need to be thought about as far as quality of life for the people that are dealing with that.
Thank you.
My wife and I are with the Belgium Cold Springs Fire Department, and we're both EMTs. And there's been a few times where we were called out at numerous times of the day, evening, middle of the night. And we have seen a lot of times, we have trouble getting out from Oakbrook Road onto Drake's Landing to go to these calls. And even if you have a blue light, sometimes they think we're Ubers, you know. That's another issue. Just because we have a blue light doesn't mean they give us the right of way. So if we're trying to get to an emergency, and we're not allowed, and we've got a backup of 15 or 20 cars, and we're trying to get out to go to emergency, and you've got an apartment across the street that's got 345 people in it, and we can't get across the street to help them, you know, we're trying our best to do what we can, you know, as a volunteer, as EMTs, as firefighters. And we don't know how this is going to impact us. We also want to know if this complex is going to have elevators. We just went to one where somebody was on the third floor, and we had trouble, and the patient was like 300-plus pounds. That would be terrible to have somebody to get them up and down stairs. So hopefully they'll have elevators and other amenities for that. But our basic thing is safety and getting to calls in a safe manner.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
I'm Yousaf Aboufay. Live in 3331 Oakbrook. For the last 15 years or so, just from the general talk here, the main problem would be very heavy traffic. Right now, we sit in the front porch, and not a moment passes by without having cars in and out, in and out, north and south, north and south, on Drake's Landing. So traffic in particular will be a much more problem than what it is now, okay? One other issue, if I'm not mistaken, I don't know, is this a single-family neighborhood or what? So most of the houses we see here are single-family. I don't know if there is permission or something for monthly residential areas, high rises and monthly buildings and several hundred people, new people living there, so many 200, 300 cars and so on. And say from previous communication, you know, there was issue of so many garages around the main buildings and so on. So for the traffic as I said, you know, and the noise, when we were inside the house, we didn't hear anything much. But so when we get out of the house, front porch and so on, we do see cars coming and going, north and south, very, very heavy. And there's no question it will be much heavier with this kind of development. Will change the character of the neighborhood too. And as I said, I don't know if it's a single-family or monthly family is available too or allowed So basically, another issue is the 1CA project, which was planned for the same area several years ago, and it was rejected because of all of those issues. So nothing improved, but to the better situation, if not worse. So it was rejected, something rejected that time. I would hope and believe that this thing would be rejected too. My, me and my every aunt opposed to something like this, and hopefully that will be the age. And standing in and out and right and going at the junction of Drake's Landing and the roosters, some runners there too. The new construction, there are three entrances and exits in the area, the two exits on entrances of all Oakbrook, and the one just north of that. So traffic is everything in and out of that area beside what is coming and going on the Drake's Landing. One, I talked one time, or there was a time that said there would be an entrance of driveway across each side of the Oakbrook. And one idea I had at the time is about easing the traffic by, for example, a all-way traffic, you know, not all go at the same time, all-way traffic and so on. They said, well, they cannot do that so close to the main highway, the 31. So as I said, you know, we are opposed to this one and hope we want to get it permitted.
Okay, thank you.
Yousaf, could you repeat your last name? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have it on notification. Thank you, love.
You got one more, Jack?
Come on over there. Again. I just have one more quick question. I know you seem trivial. What's your address of 3285 Belgium Road? But the turning, the road that you've got is coming off Drake's. Usually when we have our address to our house, it's off Oakbrook Road. Why is the address for the development 3285 Belgium Road? Shouldn't it be on Drake's? The address is going to be out of Drake's?
That's an interesting question.
Drake's Road.
Well, I assume the final address will be provided by 911.
Yeah, it'll change.
Yeah.
That just what it had been prior to subdivision, probably 40 years ago.
It's just confusing because it comes from Belgium Road, and it's like it's...
Yeah. Once the project's completed and it's done, 911 will issue its own address. Yeah, you're welcome. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Evening.
Jeff Eil, I live on 3324 Oakbrook Road. And my major concern, obviously, I have the same concerns as all the other residents with the traffic. One of the issues is the turning lane, not having a turning lane going right onto 31. Because a lot of times when you get stuck behind traffic, turning left, and they're not able to turn left, you end up waiting same number of lights as the same people pass the people turning right. So that's an issue. The other issue is my house actually is directly behind the creek that feeds into Seneca River. And currently, it's got a good flow. Has there been a study done to show if there's going to be less of the flow through that creek?
We're required to have no increase in flow.
Is there a decrease?
I don't know if there's a decrease. There is a...
Well, that would be an issue because currently it's a beautiful creek, and a path follows that creek. And if that were to dry up, that would be a shame.
Oh. Again, the small, it's very simple. The preliminary data shows a very small decrease, less than 5%.
Less than 5%?
Yeah, yeah. That would be during a 100-year storm event. So I think you have to look at what the...
Well, what's the effect in summer? Because in summer, it's very dry. Is it going to dry up in the summer?
No.
As of this time?
No, you have perennial flow out of that little hill, not me.
It's dried up in the summer before.
Yeah, but it's not, this is my...
When you ask me if there's a decrease, and I say yes, because it's maybe, it's going to be a significant decrease, but I can't sit there and tell you there's no decrease because the thing we do is we try to, we have to go less. We try to keep it as close to existing as possible, and for those particular reasons. Now, the way it seems to characterize, there's differences, you know, depending on what storm goes through the basin. But it's, you know, it's a minor decrease. And these, I'll talk about the wetlands or site, but the Army Corps is very rigid as far as what context you do it.
And I think it should be clarified that the impact as a result of the development and the stormwater detention is only during storm events. The long-term flow of that creek is not impacted at all. So in that regard, I guess the answer is no. But during a storm event, there is detention in order to really prevent a flooding issue of that creek, and therefore there will be during a storm event.
I mean, that creek is very far from flooding, that's...
Yeah. But that's the intention of the stormwater detention. So your normal flow, your long-term flow is not affected. During a storm event, what you may have seen as a peak flow will not increase because that's a D.C. regulation. They are not allowed to allow it to increase. And if anything, there may be a decrease. But the decrease is not during normal flow, it's during a storm event. So what you normally observe, your enjoyment of that creek, there's no reason to believe there'd be any modification to it.
Then the other issue, I think, is the density of the entire project. You've got six buildings and numerous garages jammed into a small area with zero green space. I know there's green space with existing trees, but, you know, there's no grass. There's no one for anybody to really enjoy the outside, so they're going to put a hard burden on the existing facilities in Radisson. And, you know, it just seems like a lot of asphalt, a lot of pavement, a lot of concrete.
It is.
You're taking down a lot of trees. You know, one thing that's noted as you drive down Drake's Landing, there's a large buffer between houses and trees, between buildings and the road. So that's something we'd like to maintain. So that's just, that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mike Bryant, Danley Drive. Can I stand over next to the bathroom?
Sure.
I just wanted to point out something. I think we, I don't know if you can do it, but this road from a place you really ought to be over here, right across from Oak. You really shouldn't be driving down the road. You're basically speed bumps every time you're coming from here down to 31. You should only hit one here, now you're going to hit another one here. You're creating more choppiness, if you will, in the traffic. It should be down here, it should go over here. That would help out with the traffic situation. I also think you ought to, if there's a park over here, corner of the park, and it's right here, if I'm not mistaken, this ought to be connected from a pedestrian standpoint into the, into the park system, as opposed to making people while we're here down the road.
I think the slope is an issue that...
You can't get in it.
Like from an ADA standpoint, just be above the ADA.
We are bringing a trail along.
Where do you do it?
Down down here.
Yeah.
There's a trail, there's a trail, I'm not sure exactly.
Just pass that to the, there it goes.
You're going to connect up to the trail, so you're going to connect that.
Yeah.
I forgot what it was. I'll remember it, I'll come back up, because there was one, which was my comment set.
Thank you.
So you guys are going to be connecting to our trails? Is that what I just heard?
Yeah.
So all those people are not going to be using our amenities?
They pay dues.
It will be better management.
Okay.
Well, they're Radisson, yeah. They have a right to use them, yeah.
Okay. We're going to retain these waters.
You want to say something else?
Yes, Dr. Drake, comments?
Okay.
We do live in the Ferris House at the entrance of the, north entrance of the Oakbrook 3331. So would be most affected more than any other people, actually. We were told at that time, when we were talking about it previously, as to why not to get entrance and exit to the whole department here on Drake's, on Route 31, as said, that would not be allowed by the state. And the other point is the effect of this kind of development on the houses rising on the area. I think that would be really the effect. We'll see what will happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was reminded about my circular comments.
All right. All right. One more comment.
I don't see any recreational, you know, the apartment should probably going to attract some small children, I suspect. There's nothing, there's no recreational, anything that I see here on the plan I'm looking at. And I don't know if that's, somebody's going to build into that, but we probably ought to address that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, there being no other people that wish to speak, I will close the public hearing at 8:00. Thank you very much for your comments and input. Next item on our agenda is the approval of our January minutes for our January meeting. Everyone have a chance to read Karen's latest magnum opus.
Yes.
Excellent job, Karen, by the way. I make a motion that we accept the minutes. I know there were several revisions made. I made one, I think you made one, minor revision, as submitted and revised.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, so move. At this time, we've heard a lot of good input tonight. We completed our seeker review, and we're getting a resolution for our next meeting. As you can tell, we still have some issues that we have to work on. We have more information we have to receive in final form from you before we can hold the site plan review. So our hope is that by March, we will have that worked out between you, Al, and us with regard to landscaping and the SWAP and the issues with the emergency vehicles and turnarounds, all of which I know you're prepared to work with us on. You heard it here tonight, you heard it from me at other meetings, I'm going to repeat it again. Two-story, less density would make this a lot easier to run. But having said that, we'll review this as a planning board's required to review it within the context of the codes and rules we operate on. So at this point, there being no further business before us, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll move it.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, so move. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.